Good evening, all. Tonight is the September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular Board of Education meeting and roll call, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta, here. Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mrs. Sully, here. Mrs. Reynolds, here. Mr. Nickram.
Here. And we will start off with the pledge allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we start off every board meeting by reading the vision and mission statement. And the vision is achieving distinction in all that we do. And the mission statement is cultivate an high, an inclusive, high-performance culture of growth and community. Alrighty, and, Mr. Dr. Abbott, do we have any comments from the public tonight?
Uh, we do not.
We do not. Alrighty, quickly moving on to the consent agenda tonight.
Sure, Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items had been provided to all board members in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening you have item A, minutes from August eighteen, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting. Item B, personnel appointments, and I do not believe we have any of those this evening. So, item C, behavioral mental health services agreement. Item D, gifts to the school district, including a donation from the AAUW of school supplies with an approximate value of two hundred and fifty dollars. A donation from the Ball Corporation of School Supplies with an approximate value of two hundred and fifty dollars. A donation from Grace United Church of School Supplies with an approximate value of two hundred and fifty dollars. A donation from Thomas and Linda Amicich of five hundred dollars to the Fort Atkinson Middle School. And a donation from Terrace Staffing of School Supplies with an approximate value of four hundred dollars. And certainly, the board appreciates all of those donations this evening. An item E, payment of district bills and the treasurer's report.
Alrighty, thank you. Would anyone like to pull any of the consent agenda items out at all tonight for further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Reynolds, yes. Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. Alright, moving on to the summer school program.
Yes, we have Mrs. Oakley, our Director of Instruction this evening, with us to present a summer school two thousand twenty-two report.
Hello, everyone. It's my pleasure this evening to present an update on our summer school session from two thousand twenty-two. I always like to start the summer school report with just a quick overview of our programming. We run a traditional K-eight summer school program for our students in elementary and middle school, as well as offering elementary camp offerings. Through that, we run a non-competitive online signup process that offers the opportunity for students to access both enrichment, which is for fun, maintenance, which are grade level and intervention offerings in math and reading, as well as course offerings that we've carefully designed to provide a balance of physical activity, academic work, technology, art, games, thematic classes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. At the middle school and high school level, the majority of our classes are, we call, camps. Those are shorter length and shorter commitment for students and families. We also run high school credit recovery, which is a blended structure where students do online work, as well as work in person with classroom teachers. We offer intervention courses at Fort Atkinson Middle School in math, reading, and writing. And last but not least, we offer booster classes specifically to accelerated coursework or advanced placement offerings at the high school. So, a wide variety of types of classes that we offer in our summer school program. In addition to the offerings we do, I'd just like to remind the public that we do take summer school safety very seriously. We have a lot of students that come to join us for our programming. So, especially with our youngest students, we make big efforts to make sure that students are comfortable and families know that their children are safe when they're with us in summer school. We do that through summer school open house at both Purdy and Luther, which provide opportunity for students to do schedule practices, practice, as well as meet the many kindergarten teachers, as those are our students who are coming directly to us for the very first experience sometimes with public schools. We keep all of our student information in Power School, regardless of where the student is joining us from in their school year school. All our staff wear ID badges. Our youngest students wear name badges with their schedules on it. We take hourly attendance and make sure that we follow up with attendance calling if students don't make it to their classes. We make sure that we do all of our normal safety procedures, including locked doors and implementation of drills. We also offer a bus pickup and drop-off from Berry and Rockwell, which is, was, has become a very popular option, especially when there's a bridge out for families to avoid the traffic related to these two schools that are so close together. And last but not least, we're happy to offer our students a breakfast that, at the elementary level, is served during summer school and a lunch that they can stay afterwards for. So, this is the time where I like to spotlight new, new improvements that we made specifically for this year. We had three new traditional offerings for our K-eight students. One of them was called Fiber Art Fun, taught by Suzie Belzer. It was a nice class, working with a lot of fiber art. We also had Jessica Zuniga, who is also another art teacher in the district, who did printmaking and collage. And then, last but not least, we were finally able to offer a soccer summer school class. Parents have been asking for that for a long time, and we've had a hard time finding teachers. So, we were really excited to bring soccer stars here to our youngest students at Luther this year. Probably the most, the most new innovations for our summer school program this year was in elementary and middle school camps. Everything on the screen are brand-new camps that we had this year. We had a three-D printing camp. We had American Sign Language camp. We had an art studio camp where kids met weekly to do ongoing independent art projects. We had a garden club camp. We had a running club for students in middle school, as well as a running club class in the regular Purdy offerings. We had a science fair camp. We had a survival skills camp. And last but not least, we had a volleyball camp. So, really some nice new offerings that were well-received. Our new high school camp was a return of an oldie but goodie with mural marathon. That class, that camp is offered through the high school art department and typically selects a location in the community for our art students to do an installation. This year, they did multiple installations, one of which, that is pictured, is in the high school special education department, based on a collaboration with that team. So, lots of smiling faces and pride about that mural. And when we talk a little bit about the specifics, you can see that we were down a little bit in enrichment classes. Even with the new courses, that was done purposely to try to attempt to right-size to our less enrollment at those elementary and middle school levels and making sure those class sizes are at those optimal places to maximize our reimbursement for teacher costs. We ran the same number of intervention, maintenance, gifted and talented, and special education courses. We added one credit recovery course. And as you can see, the biggest change was we had eleven more camps this year than we did last year, which brings our total to a hundred and forty offerings for summer school. I always think it's interesting when people picture summer school, they think really of that elementary programming at Luther and Purdy. This year, we had one thousand four hundred and twenty-one students, individual students participate in summer school. Some of them participated in lots of different summer school offerings. Some of them took one camp. But this is student, individual students who connected to our summer school program. Half of those were elementary students. The next highest group was high school students. And then, a group that we've been working diligently to bring to our summer school program is our middle school students. So, really proud of that distribution, so that all of our students have an entry point and connection to our summer school programming. Here's a quick look at enrollment trends for summer school. So, as you can see, our outlier, outlier was that really fun year in twenty-two, summer in twenty-twenty that we just don't talk about anymore. But we were really happy to see our numbers, even with reduced overall enrollment. Our summer school number made it past that fourteen-hundred mark, which, as you can see, was really where we were pre-pandemic. So, we were really pleased that people connected to us and found their way back to those summer school programmings in confidence. It felt a little bit more like back to what we are typically used to for our summer school. When I think about our staff, I think it's important to share, we had a total of a hundred and sixteen certified staff members. Out of those sixty-five were in our K-twelve, K-eight traditional programs, either at Luther and Purdy. Forty-three of them were camp teachers, and eight were credit recovery teachers. Out of that staff, sixty-six percent or two-thirds of them returned from the summer school session, and a little over one-third were new hires for our summer school session. We also continue to see that about two-thirds of the teachers for us in summer school are our employees, and a third of them are employees that we hire either only for summer school or recruit from other districts for summer school. So, another fun thing to talk about regarding summer school was our second STEAM Academy. This year, our STEAM Academy theme was Take Flight. Our students who participated in STEAM Academy built radio-controlled airplanes. They designed, decorated, learned about aeronautics. And you can see the airplanes that they built, as well as some of the team-building activities they did to design, to work together as a team, and to do different experiments with flight. We were excited to see our STEAM Academy enrollment grow. And we're really trying to connect to that middle school group. And as you can see, last year, we had fewer middle school students. And this year, we're hoping that as the years matriculate through, that our students will return. We had a very high return rate from the students who were last year in our Rock the Boat STEAM Academy. So, we're hoping that kids see this as an annual occurrence, that they participate with us. So, forty-seven students, up from thirty-three last year, first week of August, summer school district of Fort Atkinson STEAM Academy. Lastly, I just thought it would be a nice reminder to share that we also did some jumpstart work. This is another area we've been trying to build up for our youngest students, especially those who need some transition support. We offer what we call jumpstart to first grade. And that's an opportunity for students to come in, start getting back into those routines. It's very well-attended by Luther students, because it's taught here. We've had some requests to try to establish a jumpstart in each grade, in each building. The challenge is just seeing if we can secure teachers for that time. Sometimes, teachers aren't real excited about giving up the week before school, the week before they go back to school to teach summer school. But summer school ran for us right up until the day before teachers returned with the high school. Help me out. Thank you. Link Crew, summer school leaders who were there. Oh, my gosh, I can't believe I said this. The Link Crew summer school teacher, summer school leaders came in for that Link Crew class. So, it's, it's crazy. It really goes all summer long in a, in a really great way. And as we think about two thousand twenty-three, our biggest priorities is to continue to find ways to retain and recruit summer school staff. The demand is there. The more we could offer, the kids come. It's really whether we can find teachers who are interested or willing to participate as summer school staff. We, the major, the grand majority of our new hires this year were brand-new graduates. We connected with UW-Whitewater, and they are some fabulous, enthusiastic. When they ask if they can decorate their room for, for the nineteen days they teach summer school, yes, yes, you can. So, that was really a great place, and we appreciate that partnership with Whitewater. We also collect requests from parents in the survey about new camp and course offerings. And every year, we do our best so that families see those. And we continue to maximize community partnerships. For example, we do a Dwight Foster Library Summer Reading Program camp where kids can come there and a teacher walks them through the camp activities. And our community really, really enjoys when summer school and community organizations can merge. So, my favorite part of this report is just giving you a couple snapshots. So, whether it was learning how to sew your own shorts or make a pillow, improving your reading skills, having fun and tumbling, creating fiber art fun, exploring STEM concepts using Legos, learning fire safety in Safety City, becoming chess masters, capturing memories in scrapbooks, learning the magic of Harry Potter, building your own rocket, making your own armor using anvils, working together in gardening camp, using a kilometer to see how high, I hope I said that right, the rocket goes in science fair camp. Is that right? Kilometer? Or fishing in angler education camp. Wow.
It was a plant.
It actually wasn't. We had an awesome summer for summer school. So, it's, it's great to say thank you to the people that make that happen for our students and our district. Our teach, big thank you to the teaching staff, our summer school support staff team, the Buildings and Grounds team, which are just heroes in the background of making summer school happen. DJ Skullin and his tech team, the nutrition team, my office and the HR office team, Lisa Hollenberger and the People's Services Special Ed team. And a special thanks to the summer school principal, Brian Bosch, Dave Geiger, Matt Wolf, and Adam Rousseau. So, and a last, a thank you to our families and students for making summer school what it is. So, I can answer any summer school questions you might have at this time.
Awesome, appreciate that. I, I noticed there's, I believe, ten more camps. Is that right, this year? Do you foresee that trend moving forward like that?
Teachers really, so we came up with the idea of camps a while back when we asked parents why we weren't getting more middle school and high school students engaged in summer school. And their answer was, a five-week commitment every day at eight o'clock in the morning is, is just not something we're interested in. So, at that time, we started to recruit teachers who have a passion area and ask them if they can give up, you know, a week or every Tuesday. And we, we allow the teacher to choose whatever time works for them. So, camps happen for one week. They happen on Tuesday afternoons at three-thirty. They, I mean, whatever the teacher chooses to offer. And families love camps. And so, the, the, we will def, we definitely see that as an entry point for a teacher to connect to summer school that isn't ready to make that longer commitment. It's also a great way to, you know, get our community connected to the summer school program beyond when they're in that Monday through Friday, eight to noon, summer school program. So, I can see that continuing to grow. I think as, it's, it's often a teacher will say to me, like, oh, you know, we want to do a home improvement project, you know, in the fall. Think I could teach a summer school camp? Yes.
Yeah.
And so, it's, it's just fun. And it's also one of the, I think the reason why kids enjoy it so much is teachers pick an area that is something that they're really interested in, that may not be anything related to what they normally teach. And when you see a teacher doing a hobby or something they're really amazing at, whether it's scrapbooking or chess or running or whatever, it just brings another layer of social-emotional connection to that teacher, because you also see that they have interests besides just the subject area they teach during the school year. So, it makes it seem, you know, less intensive a commitment when you're doing something you really love and sharing it with kids, so.
Right.
It's something unique to Fort. I don't think other districts that I'm aware of run those little, little sessions all through the summer.
Yeah, well, flexibility, flexibility is important, especially at that middle school age, right?
Mm-hmm. And for families that are busy.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, those new classes and the newer camps, how many of those were, like, full? Were there some of them that weren't so full? Did, was there a lot of offerings that didn't get filled?
Oh, no. So, if, if we offer it, kids come. And what we do is, I'm just going to pull back to that camp slide. What we do is, if a teacher wants to offer a camp, and it's not, it's not filling as quickly. So, the major, many camps, if we can get them in during, prior to priority registration, will fill. And we actually have to either open another section or have a waiting list. So, lots of people sign up for camps right during priority registration. We make a point that we don't turn anyone away. So, if there is a space where we need to add an aide because the class got a little big, or typically, the teacher will say, okay, I'll just add another section, and then that one fills. So, we really try hard to, especially if people sign up during that priority registration, to make sure that they all get in. And sometimes, teachers will say, like, do you think it'll run? Yeah, it'll run. And if, you know, we did have a couple of camps that we promoted on social media. As soon as those camps hit social media, the, you know, the enrollments came in. So, people are very excited to have an opportunity for their child to get involved in something that has such a short-term commitment.
Yeah. When I always thought of summer school, I always thought of as being remedial, but that's what it was when I was younger. And so, when I came to Fort and my kids were at that school age, it was very exciting to see that there were all these opportunities. I still have, I think, some of the sewing projects for my daughter, who just graduated high school, and some of the arts with glass.
Painting on glass, yes.
Yes, we went to, yes, St. Vincent de Paul many, many times, because they had to get more and more glass. I think we supplied it for the whole class. But I was going to ask how, how this does compare to the other districts around, and is this something unique to Fort?
You know, I, I don't, I haven't connected up real recently with how others have responded after COVID or after the shutdown portion of the pandemic. We really made a point of seeing summer school as an opportunity to promote the district in a different way. And what's lovely about summer school is, you know, it's hard not to have all the feels when your kid is graduating from Safety City or if your child is bringing home the art project or, you know, they have learned a new skill. Or it, there's just, everything about summer school is low-pressure, fun, and it breeds and offers an opportunity for us to connect in a different way that I think feeds forward to our core programming. And so, when we, as administrators, really took on summer school, gosh, I don't even know how many years ago. It wasn't that long ago. But we just said, this is too important of an opportunity to not take advantage of and have challenged ourselves every year to make it a bigger, more prominent part of who we are, so that the social-emotional needs of our learners in the summer and their connection to the school, you know, remains strong. And we, we really also see it as an opportunity to spotlight ourselves. We have a lot of student, families who choose to come to summer school who are residents, who are attending other schools. And it's a great way for us to get those students to meet us and, and start to have some experiences in our buildings that are positive. So, we really see it as something we try to do to distinguish ourselves. I know we run, we, we, we have quite a few families that call us from outside of our resident areas that want to attend our summer school.
Yeah, the variety of offerings is amazing. I mean, I think it is a real asset to the district. Thanks. So, kudos to all of you for putting on such great programming.
Thanks. Every year. They put on great programming every year, which is awesome.
We really try to outdo ourselves every year, so we'll see.
I think you succeed.
Well, could you elaborate on that? Are there any requirements? I mean, do they have to live within the Fort School District?
They do. In order for us to receive reimbursement for the students' time in summer school, we, we are required to take resident, we have resident students. We can choose to open our programming to non-resident students, but we get no reimbursement from the state for those students.
But they don't have to necessarily be students of Fort School District?
Correct.
Just residents of.
Yep, private school students. We, we get lots of St. Joes, St. Pauls, Faith Community, Crown of Life, students who choose to attend that, you know, really appreciate and enjoy our programming as well.
I want to, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, so is that the same as, like, if a student is enrolled in here, but they don't live in our district?
That would be open enrollment, and open enrollment students can attend summer school because they are enrolled students. But these would be students who are coming from Whitewater, Watertown, Cambridge, Jefferson. We get calls from families. We do, if the student does have a residence for the summer, for instance, if they live with grandma for the summer, if they live with dad for the summer and it's in Fort Atkinson, then they can be considered a resident student for our summer school program. But typically, they appreciate some of the offerings, and then they come and we have to say, sorry, you couldn't open enroll to our district if you wanted to do summer school.
Um, I just want to, if I heard this correctly, acknowledge that
Um, I just want to, if I heard this correctly, acknowledge that you had said that some of the courses were kind of tied in through the community and that you had that connection. I think that's something that sounds really great for our city culturally. Is there, what other classes do you have that have that connection beyond just the library?
Yeah, we have tried to encourage each of our camp teachers to identify a community organization that would connect or classes. So for instance, like, the, at times, the Fort, when, in previous years, the Fort Atkinson Garden Club had connected to our gardening class. Obviously, we have a lot of Fort Atkinson organizations that connect to Safety City. We had guest speakers coming in to our, to our camps. We really, the community is so appreciative of summer school, that I've never had a time where I've called a community member and asked them to participate, that they haven't said, yes, excited to be part of it. And our, our vision is to continue to try to find ways to overlap, so that, you know, those, those connections are strong to feed forward to other connections during the school year.
All right, any other comments?
I just have one more. The teachers that are in, not in our district that come and teach here, how many of those end up staying? Do you have?
If we have a vacancy, I mean, it, it obviously provides a nice opportunity for us to screen some new teachers. We also have some, many of them ask if we have vacancies, so, I mean, whether, we, we obviously would work, it's an, it's a lovely opportunity to watch a brand-new teacher teach in summer school and share an opening we might have. I can't, I'm trying to think if I can think of circumstances where we had a specific hire for summer school. I can think of a few.
It's a separate contract, it's a limited-term contract that's specific to summer school. So, yep, there's some of them, definitely, I'm sure, over the years, have applied for positions in our, in our classrooms now. But it's also a nice opportunity, in some cases, to have district, our teachers from other school districts come in and spend a little time with us in both directions. That can really be a benefit as well.
All right, all right, good. Thank you for the presentation.
You bet.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
All right, moving on to item five, Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan.
Yes, of, of the many, but of the many requirements for the district to secure ESAR funds distributed through the Department of Public Instruction through the federal, or by the federal government, wow. Federal government gave us ESAR funds, which works through the DPI, which then matriculates down to local school districts. As part of that process, the school board needs to take action for a safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan, which essentially is the plan that explains how it is schools are currently operating, even if they are operating one hundred percent in-person, as we are. So the plan that is before the board this evening for your approval is, of course, available to the public, but is an update that we are required to do annually, or perhaps more often if things change, but it simply states that we are in-person in our instructional delivery this year.
Thank you. Any thoughts or any discussion on that?
I read through it, it seems really comprehensive and exactly what we're doing right now, back to in-person with all the safety measures put in place, so.
Right.
Those were nice edits to make when those happened a while back. So Mrs. Hollenberger, Mrs. Oakley, and Mr. Demerath and others work on that, that piece as well. So those were, those were nice changes.
All right, we have a motion from us.
Be it resolved that the board approved the SDFAs Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Ms. Bukta, and all those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed. All right, moving on to items for future board meetings.
Um, yeah, you have a busy fall coming up in October, November, December. Among other topics, you'll see a two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three academic and career plan, a district technology report, the annual nutrition services report. You'll also be receiving an enrollment report, especially given the fact that we are upon our third Friday count, which is the way that we account for our students heading into the school year, Start College Now requests, the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget adjustments, and then just for your information, School Board Appreciation Week is coming up October second through the eighth.
Fantastic, great, great.
We have a little number of special meetings planned for that week, so.
All right.
And when's our next meeting again? I think we, didn't we change the date, or?
October twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. October twenty-fifth.
All right, moving on to the last item on the agenda.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education adjourned?
Second.
Right here.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion by Ms. Reynolds, a second by Ms. Sully, all those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed. All righty, seven oh one PM.